All right, we'll get this public caucus started. Tonight, we have Dave Travazani and Ben Anderson to talk about the parking system. Thank you, guys, for agreeing to come in.
Flori, yours.
Great, thank you. Thanks again for having us. This is our second quarter meeting where we would like to get in front of this body and just give you an update as to where we are with parking. I know we weren't able to get here in the first quarter with all the changes that were going on and with COVID, so I just wanted to offer an invitation to the new council members, Councilperson King, if there's any questions or anything you want to talk about specifically on how this works and who we are. I'd be more than happy to have that conversation to sort of get you up to speed if you needed that. I think we'll start off with some financial highlights and then we'll update you, you know, where we are with operations and where we are with some new initiatives going on, more specifically, how our discussions are going with our bondholders in light of the effects COVID has had on the operations of the system. I'll turn it over to Ben.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We'll jump right into the financial summary. So, the year-to-date performance for the parking system is doing very well. We're--
Sorry, before you get started, is your microphone on?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, we, our net operating income is better than budget by $421,000, and I'll get into the revenue figures in a moment, but the expenses being better than budget by nearly $214,000 is a little bit affected by the, by some delays in what we expected to incur in terms of expenses. Our repairs and maintenance budget hasn't been touched to the degree that we thought. We've delayed our management expense and fee and some insurance costs to date, so that's about $150,000 that we expect to incur in the near future, but nevertheless, we're doing all right compared to the deficit budget that we passed for this year. So, delving into those numbers, you can see here that our monthly parking, our monthly access holders, the revenue is basically on budget as are merchant validations. However, we're still struggling to attract transient, that is, the one-off garage parkers who seem to prefer the on-street spots. We can also point to the fact that there was a garage rate change in 2020. In addition, our enforcement technology is helping improve the on-street numbers. We have license plate recognition technology in our enforcement vehicles. And then, we were conservative in terms of budgeting for this year, not knowing how the recovery would take place. You can see that our senior debt service number reported through May is 1.24, and that's below the concession agreement covenants where we should be achieving a 1.4 debt service coverage ratio.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. I think that's an important point to keep in mind, that when we budgeted last year with the pandemic, you know, it was really a little bit of a, I don't want to say a crapshoot, but we really didn't know how things, how well things were going to come back during the pandemic. So, as you can see on the far right, the budget that we passed was a deficit budget. Our net operating income is actually less than the debt service obligation that we have, not knowing where we're going to be revenue size. So, although we're doing, we think, very well as compared to budget, that's the good news, the not-so-good news is, you know, we, we still have a deficit budget that we passed at the end of the year. So, so things are looking, looking much better, but I, but in light of that, what we thought we would do is compare where we are today with what 2019 was, pre-pandemic, and which is the next, which is the next slide. In the, in the far left, it's, it's May to May, but I want to focus more on the, on the year-to-date. If you look at monthly parking, for example, year-to-date, 2019 was $677,000, year-to-date, 2022 was $581. So, the $95,000 in that line means that we were lower in 2022 as compared to 2019, so still a bit of a ways to go. Again, on transient parking, it's 56% down as compared to 2019 year-to-date. That's where we've struggled really the most, is trying to get folks back into the garages. Ben pointed to that a little bit. I mean, part of that is the rate increase, part of that is people would rather park on the street than go into the garages. So, the good news here is, is that the parking meter, which is the, the on-street parking, is performing very well as compared to 2019. We're at $622,000 versus $505, so it does $117,000 better than 2019 to this point in the year. I think that's a really good sign. It says a couple of things, folks would rather park on the street because they're not parking in the garages right now, which we're hoping to correct, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But keep in mind also that the rate increase for 2020 is reflected in those numbers as well. And then, I think Ben mentioned this, the technology, the license plate technology, it used to be someone would buy time, and if they left early, someone else could pull into that spot because they already paid the meter, and then they would piggyback on the previous person's payment. Because with license plate technology now, you start over. When the car moves, now if you bought an hour, you can go park someplace else in downtown with that same hour because you're paid, but the next person who pulls into that spot is starting over. So, I think that we're just collecting a little bit more revenue there. So, those things all combined, I think, bodes well for, you know, the revenue for the on-street. Again, you can see in the year-to-date coverage ratio of 1.51. As Ben mentioned, our loan documents require us to be at 1.4, so that's, that was, we were doing well in 2019. In 2022, so far, we're at 1.24. So, we have a little bit of ways to go, but I believe that we're on the upswing, and that's a, and that's a good sign.
Before we move ahead, do you have any questions on our finances?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask you, and one of the things I know when I come downtown, I, I'm one of those guys that prints the receipt. I don't know if a lot of people do that, but I do it for a reason, because a lot of times, you know, I will put extra money in there because I know I have to go somewhere else.
Right.
So, I do like that option. I think that that's, that's really a pretty good option for--
Yeah, good.
--for people. But, you know, I guess maybe we can get into it a little bit earlier. I think you mentioned one of the frustrating things about the meters, and it actually came up today, sometimes you pull up and they don't work. They're broken down, and that, that gets a little frustrating for the citizens. So, I don't know, maybe you can speak to that later.
Yeah, I, I think I could touch on it. I, you know, overall, I think the breakdown rate is low, but it does happen, and ABM has service technicians that come out as soon as we know of a breakdown, and there is a system, I believe, Ben, that alerts the staff when it's not working, it alerts them automatically, and they can have a technician come out. So, so even though there are some breakdowns, the breakdown shouldn't be for a very long period of time.
I was going to ask that--
And I know that that could be frustrating, but--
Is there any way of tracking, like, the length of time? I guess maybe there's various reasons why it's broken down, but--
We, we can't. I'm sure that, we don't have that today, but we certainly have that information because it's documented and--
Well, just, you know, I just think it's important because when people, you know, obviously people complain, I just complained.
Yeah.
It's nice to be able to come back and say, listen, you know, I understand these are machines, they're bound to break down, but, you know, right now, ABM is averaging two hours, they're averaging--
Understood.
--a day, whatever it may be.
Yep.
At least we can come back with an answer and--
Yep, we can get that information and--
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I know that's a problem that I've brought up in the past as well, and I believe I'd asked at some point about a percentage of how many machines are in disrepair each day, and I think you'd come back with something pretty minimal, like 1%.
Yeah. We'll, we'll update it and resend.
Yep, okay. Thank you very much.
Great.
So, moving in, moving into our operations update. ABM has some staffing needs, current staffing needs. We, we need to hire an operations manager. We had a short-term operations manager, moved on to another position, and several back-office staffers. We've been, we've been covering as best we can. The on-street enforcement has, has been maintained, and our maintenance staff has, has turned over. We had a promotion earlier this year to operations, excuse me, maintenance supervisor. So, we're, we have our eyes on the garage, but however, there's, there's some back-office accounting staff and some administrative help that we're still looking to hire. In the meantime, while we don't have an operations manager, our regional manager is spending more time in Scranton, so we're in touch almost daily. We're very excited about the Center Street Living Alley Initiative that the council passed ordinance for earlier, I believe, about a month ago. We've been working with Scranton Tomorrow, the city planning department, and other stakeholders to, to roll that out. Been talking to them for a good amount of time. We're lending the, the use of our electrical outlets for the lights. We've been talking with our tenants about access and facilitating the events there, and they're very excited. As you know, it's just right outside of the Casey Garage, across the street from the Hilton. We, we look forward to more there. It's, it's a success that we've maintained our retail presence. Our tenancy has, has been, we've actually, during the pandemic, we signed a couple of tenants. Our current tenants have options if their leases are renewing this year. We just signed a new one with O'Donnell and Fraker, the Fine Furniture Perveyors, right on, on Center Street, and we have a really good working relationship with, with these tenants. You may have heard that Papa's Pizza is looking to, to turn over, and we've also worked to extend their lease to facilitate their, that transaction as well. In terms of our capital repair needs, Dave and I have been looking a few years in the future, based on what our current needs are and our wish list. There are some significant repairs needed to the Linden garage stairwell in the northwest corner. There's been some water damage, and that followed some, some freeze-thaw damage to a parapet earlier this year that closed down the Linden Street entrance, so that we're, we need to look more closely into, even though we finished repairs recently, some of the finishing touches there. A significant repair need is the, the offices that ABM currently employs. On a monthly basis, they have plumbing issues that we've engaged a consultant, engineering consultant, to help us figure out. We believe we have figured out the issue. There's some dips in, in the sewer line that may affect the, the ability to market the, the one tenant space that we do have open, the former Coliseum nightclub next door. We, we are optimistic that we figured that out with, with the help of this consultant, and we're going to be moving forward with the bidding for the, the work soon. Are there any questions on, on our current operations?
So, are all repairs finished on Electric City?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks, Ben. The capital repairs has been one of our, our biggest challenges through the pandemic because, as I think you know, we've been using all of our reserves to cover debt service and operations and challenged right now to, to keep up on the repairs. So, we're, we're doing what we can. Some of the, some of the things are being deferred. We have an elevator that's down in, in Linden that's not used all that often. There is two elevators there, so there's still access for folks, but a bit of an inconvenience. So, I think we're doing the best with what we can and trying to identify capital sources until the, until things come back. I wanted to touch on what, what we've status with you in the past, and you know that the pandemic has obviously impacted the parking systems' financials greatly. We've lost close to $1 million in 2020, and in 2021, 2022 is looking a little better. We're hoping it's better than breakeven. We think that it will. But along the way, we've obviously have been able, have, have been, needed to work with our bondholders because we wanted and needed to keep them abreast of what was happening. And thankfully, we've been able to continue to make our payments through the reserves that we set aside, both for operating debt service and the capital reserves. So, the dollars we had set aside for capital, we were required to use those to make debt service payments along the way so that we would not be in default of the debt. And we've been able to do that, and our next payment is in July. I think we have the dollars available to make that payment. Beyond that, January, I think will be a little bit more of a challenge, but we're hope within the meantime that Alliance Bernstein, who has been really very good to look, work with, is looking to give us some payment relief. Now, they're, they're not looking to do a bond restructure, there was been conversations, talked about that, or do a new bond issue to pay off the old bonds. Alliance Bernstein holds all the bonds, so it's not a, a bond issue where you have multiple bondholders and we're dealing with a trustee. It's just the one bondholder. I think that's a big advantage for us because they understand that this is not a management issue. This is not, the economy in Scranton has gone to heck, and, and now the, the revenue's down because the economy's changed here. It's, this is due to the pandemic, and it's a matter of when that will come back and how much of that will stay. So, I think in working very closely with them, they recognize that, that they like this asset, they want to stay here, obviously. They want to continue to be, you know, a partner in this, in this asset, but they need to continue to get paid. And so, thankfully, they and we both want, want to be able to look at this on a long-term, on a long-term basis, right? So, so they have, we have brought in a team, which includes Walker, Walker Consulting, actually, the city's FA has been part of the team, to help us look at options and ways to build in some flexibility so that if we were short of a payment, they can work with us and work with the bondholders so that we didn't go into default. And so, some of the things that, that obviously have been critical are cash flow availability, debt service reserves, capital reserves, those have all been used to make debt service payments along the way. Those are things that we want to restore, and what Alliance Bernstein, in, in working with us on, wants to be able to restore those in a way that is in the long-term best interest of this asset. And so, where, where we've been having conversations is on the capital reserves. Where can we identify some monies? Have we been having, had some conversations with the city around some of these short-term needs that we have? How do we fund those if we don't have the cash flow from the operation to fund them while we're figuring out how to pay debt service? The other two items, I think, are, really, they all go hand-in-hand, but the last two items are critical, and that is a parking rate adjustment and a concession term extension. Now, these are just things that we've been talking about. These are our recommendations, and we know that Alliance Bernstein and we are aligned on this. This has to go through, obviously, a process to get, to get through this body, the Parking Authority, the Board of CDPS, which has a representative and Council President Donahue on, on that board. So, so we've had many conversations around where we expect to go or where we would like to go, and I think we're at the point, and I can't share up all the details today because we're still running our financial models with Walker, but I, I think I can say that the parking rate adjustment is one where we're looking to adjust the rates, again, thinking long-term, coming in line with best practices for other garages around the country, where the rates in the, what we want is the rates in the garages to be lower than the rates that are on the street. So, if we're at $2 an hour on the street right now, we want to be below that on, in, in the garages, and that is what we're, we're looking to do. Alliance Bernstein supports that, but hand-in-hand with that will be a concession term extension. What that means is, we started this in 2016, so we're, what, five, six years in. They would like, and we think it's in the, the system's best interest, to just take that out to the full 45 years again, because we know if we do a rate adjustment and we go lower in the garages, which is going to be a good thing for the long-term, our bondholders and we are going to need some time to allow that to happen, and so that'll, that'll be a benefit is, that'll go with the rate, the rate reduction. So, because we know there's going to be some short-term deficits in the earlier years once that takes place, but, and you saw this when we looked at the numbers just now, people are trying to find a spot on the street. The idea is to get the folks off the street, in the garage, so that those premium spaces on the street are turned over and somebody else comes in. It's really not a good thing to have a parker stay in the, a two-hour spot for two hours. It's better to have them park, move, and have people in the garages so that somebody who is okay paying the premium, and they want to pull up right where they want to, they want to go, those are the best spots, and those are the spots that we want to turn over. So, we think it's, this is an important thing. We think it's good for the system. We think it's good for Scranton. We think it's good for the merchants. I mean, right now, the merchants, we have a validation program which provides them with a discount. We don't even think that'll be needed now if we go, if we have the rates in the garages lower than the on-street rates.
So, for example, I think it's, is it $2 for an hour to park on--
That's right.
--on the street?
Yep.
So, what you're looking to do is, I'm just example here, an hour, a $1.50 for an hour inside--
It'll be, it'll be lower than $2. I mean, we're playing with the numbers. It'll probably be--
Sure.
Could be a dollar.
So, you want to drive people into those garages so it opens up--
It's the idea.
--those spots, and then you get the premium.
Yep, that's the idea. And that's best practices in the industry. We think it's the right thing to do long-term. You know, when we did this in 2016, we inherited the rate structure, and there wasn't a lot of understanding as to who the customer was, how, how the, how the customer was responding to the rates, and so I think we've learned a lot over the past two years. And if the pandemic did anything, it caused us to take a step back and look at our customers, our rates, the performance, and we think this is, this is definitely the, the way to go. But again, we, we'll share more detail when we have it with this group, with the city, with Parking Authority, and of course, our board, but I think Alliance Bernstein has been very good in working with us and understanding the need to look at this on a longer-term basis. So, we're, we're actually excited for all the difficulty it's been over the past couple of years.
Let me ask you this. So, if you were successful in lowering the rates in the garages, are you looking to increase the rates on the street?
No.
No.
What, what we, what we hope to do is freeze the rates for a period of time, three, four years, and then just have regular inflationary increases periodically along the way. So, the rates that are, are on-street now will stay for at least the next two to four years.
Thank you.
If there's no more questions, if there's no more questions there, the, the next item is, is something that we've status here before, it's parking decriminalization, and we're calling it that because right now, if someone gets a ticket, it's a, and they don't pay, it's a criminal act, and there's a warrant issued, and what a lot of cities are moving towards to try to be more efficient about collecting taxes, collecting tickets, is to move towards making it a, a civil action versus a criminal action. And so, you, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't send this to the magistrate, for example, who would then try to collect it and then issue a summons for that person's arrest. So, we think that's a positive development. And the practical reasons for this, we have the authority in the concession agreement to already, to already have a immobilization program, so it's already there. We have that authority, we have that power to do it, but we haven't been able to implement it, basically because we have not, we don't have the ability to access the magistrate's database to determine who paid and who didn't pay. That's, that's been really the issue for this long. It's, if somebody gets a ticket, we send them a notice. If they don't pay, we send it to the magistrate. The magistrate sends them a notice. If they don't pay, there's a hearing or summons issued. So, we don't, we don't have access to, to what the magistrate's doing directly on a regular basis, so if somebody else, if they paid their ticket, we wouldn't know that. We just get a check from the magistrate, so we don't know. So, if that person came back in town and got another ticket, we can't immobilize that car because we're not sure if they paid or not paid. So, it's been a challenge for us. So, what we're recommending is we move to a, a system where it's not criminal, it's civil, and there's a hearing officer that hears these as opposed to the magistrate. I understand the magistrate's very supportive of this, simply because the number of tickets they get and have to deal with there are pretty, pretty, quite, quite a few. And so, we, we think this works. We've hired a consultant, we, we've gotten their recommendations, we've been working with the city, and we're hoping to put this in place in the, in the near future, and we think it's going to be a good thing for, you know, for us. And I'll turn it over to Ben to maybe give you some of the details, but we, we do think this, and, and remember, we're, all we're looking for is the folks to just pay for what they use, right? We don't, we're not, we don't want to be issuing tickets. We just want folks to pay, but you need an incentive. Sometimes you need an incentive, because if folks can pay and run up 10, 15, 20 tickets, which is what's been happening, and then there's no penalty for that, folks are going to continue to do it. So, this is not like we want to hardship people. What we want to do is make sure we have a little bit of teeth so that people just pay for what they're using. It's really the idea.
I have a question about the--
Go ahead.
I had a question about the immobilization. I know that was brought up in the past, and I don't recall, was it, was it a boot that was suggested? Is that correct?
The Barnacle.
Yeah, there's a, there's a system called Barnacle--
Right.
--where it's not a boot. If you've, I've never been booted, but if you ever have, I guess it's a nightmare to try to get them to take it off, and your car's stuck, and so nobody wants to go through that. This is really a modern, a modern boot, where it's, it's got suction cups, it sticks to the windshield, and you can't drive your car unless you take it off, and if, once you pay, they give you a code. You punch the code in, you take it off, put it in your trunk, and then go deliver it to the drop-off station. So, it's really, if, if you're unfortunate enough to have this happen to you, it's, it's not like a boot. It's really, it should be pretty painless to have it, once you pay, to get it taken off, and then you drop it in a drop box. So, we hope we never have to use it, but if, if we had to, it's a, it's a lot more easy to deal with than a, than a boot, believe me.
And are there consequences if it's not returned?
Well, we'll have their credit card because they have to pay their ticket, so if they don't return it, they essentially bought the machine.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, who, who actually puts that on? Is, it's not the police, it's--
It'll be ABM staff.
Okay.
Yep. So, we'll, you know, we'll have to have an agreement, and we'll have to buy some of these. We'll buy the drop boxes, and we'll have an agreement with Barnacle, and, and we'll set the system up once it goes live, but, which we're hoping, we're hoping to be the fall.
And that's after three citations? So, with the third citation--
Right.
--and access to a database.
That's right. That's right. Yep.
Apart from where there are handicap regulations in effect, in that case, there would, it would, just one citation, outstanding citation would result in immobilization.
Yeah, one handicap violation--
So, if a person parks in a handicap spot, that it would go on immediately?
If they don't pay their ticket, then that, that's like--
Then the next time.
The next time.
Yeah. And then there's the case where you can't determine whether the vehicle has a registration or a license. If they also have an outstanding ticket in, in the system, then we can immobilize.
Which would, which would suggest that-- The car's not registered, and this is a coordination with the police, and so it's, it's, and this is, and we're not making this stuff up. This stuff has been done in other cities. We brought a consultant on. These are some of their recommendations and standard best practices that they've seen work. And so, we, we've really been at this for about two years now, trying to find a better way to just, again, encourage people to just pay for what they use, and so this is, we think this will be good once it gets implemented. And Ben, you want to talk about the, the grace period that--
The rollout is, is, would not be immediate upon passage of the proposed ordinance. We're, we're looking to educate the public, look for compliance, show goodwill in the sense of the outstanding ticket burden on, on the parking public would be subject to a, a grace period or even a, a discount, and that, that, those negotiations are something that we're, we're looking forward to address.
Yeah, we don't want to make this painful for folks. We, we want to be able to make a change and educate them, and we're, we're working with a local PR firm to help do some videos and some education, so folks will know this is happening, and we'll give people plenty of time to get ready for this, because there's, there has, there is quite a few folks who just get tickets and just, they don't, just don't pay them. I'm, I'm not quite sure that this body will act on this, I mean, because it's already in the concession agreement. This may be operational. We just haven't, we really wanted to update you as to where we were, the importance of this, and the direction we were going in, but--
Was it in the report, is exactly how much is owed in fines?
You mean, overall, to, to, to CDPS and ABM? Ben, do you have those-- Ben, do you have those numbers?
We, we had them as of last year. There was, there were significant, uh, some tens of thousands of dollars.
Was that $10,000?
I, I, I can't quote it exactly, but there's a significant number of outstanding violations, citations that have, have either sat at the magistrate or.
Just trying to get a sense for how bad the situation is in terms of?
I, I, I'm going from memory, but I'm, I'm, I'm remembering $50,000 to $70,000 in tickets. And what, what the important piece is for us is the amount that we collect once it goes to the magistrate. And that number is between 20 and 30%. We think once we change that, first of all, folks will pay because they know that this could potentially happen to them. So we think we'll issue less tickets and folks who do get them will pay them if they know that this is a possibility. But we'll end up collecting more revenue from those folks who don't pay because then we'll be managing it through a hearing officer for those appeals. And then we'll have a collection agency that goes and collects from those folks who still don't pay. So we, we, we think this is a good thing all the way around. It'll, it'll relieve the magistrate. The collection will, will sit with us and the public will know what to expect. And so we think it's, it's ultimately going to be good all the way around. I mean, nobody likes to get booted, but i- in order to run a system like this, you can't do it without something, without this kind of deterrent.
You asked if anyone has spoken to the court or the magistrates concerning the same?
Yes, if anyone has spoken to the court or the magistrates. Yes, yes. The, the city solicitor has been in contact with the, with the, with the magistrate and had this very conversation. And we have had conversations with the magistrate directly over the years on this issue, trying to resolve it through the magistrate's office. And I think we all agreed that that was just not going to happen in access.
They're supportive, pretty much.
We, we, we believe so. I mean, I haven't seen anything or heard directly, but the, the word that we're getting from the city administration is that yes, they are supportive.
Have you spoken to the magistrate's office?
Yes.
And court administration? Because it says here that you, you said any appeal is a level two appeal, which means it would go to common pleas. Correct?
So the appeal would go to common pleas?
I'm sorry.
The appeal would go to common pleas if a ticket or a citation is appealed?
No, the appeal would, would, if this changes, the appeal would go to a hearing officer, not the magistrate.
So yeah, so you're going to take it away from the magistrate and it's going to go to a hearing officer?
Yes.
Is the hearing officer, how, how is the hearing officer appointed?
I, I think that would be within the administration.
Would be within the city administration?
Yeah, we, we, we don't get to pick that person. I think the city, the, the city is involved in that decision.
So would we be hiring a hearing officer?
Or it would be an existing officer that hears other appeals of a similar nature, is what I've been told. But we're, but we got some work to do there. But yeah, but, but that, that's the idea. So I don't know if it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be a new person. I'm thinking it's going to be some, this already is happening someplace else.
Get in the salary and benefits and, you know, that $50,000 or $70,000 right there is gone.
Yeah. Understood.
So Sean, were you able to hear that?
To be honest, I haven't had enough time here, so if someone could just fill me in after it, then I can, I can give you guys an answer. I apologize, because I can't hear very well.
So wouldn't we go to a magistrate? Would we be going to a city-appointed hearing officer?
Is it a hearing officer?
Correct.
And who, who is the hearing officer?
There is none yet. They would appoint one, either someone that's an existing employee of the city of Scranton or possibly a new hired person. We don't, there's no, we don't have the answer to that yet.
Right.
Use my principal voice.
Yeah, citation's outstanding. Citation's outstanding is $85,000.
What is it?
$85,000.
Okay, so it's $85,000 in fines that is owed to the city at this time? Okay, thank you.
And that's, and that's really all we have. This was, hopefully didn't take up too much of your time, but wanted to give you a, a status and some, some good news and some of the things we're working on.
I just have a, one quick question. Have, have you instituted a downtown resident parking program?
We have.
How, how's that performing?
Ben, do you have the number? We don't, I don't have those numbers. We can certainly get those to you. It's, it's a, you get a discount if you live downtown.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's a, I believe it is a 20% discount.
Okay.
But how many people signed up for that? I, I can't tell you without checking.
Okay.
Ben, we, we can get those numbers and share.
Yeah, if you could send those along, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, I had a few. So when it comes to this recommended change, ABM or MDC hired a consultant? And that's, they came to this determination or?
Well, they were, they, they, they helped us understand what best practices were, what some other cities are doing. I think Redding does something similar. There's other cities in Pennsylvania have done something similar. And this, what was our, what was our consultant's name?
Our consultant is named Matt LaHenitz. He was a lieutenant of records and parking for the city of Easton. And he was in that position.
I'm sorry. So Matt LaHenitz is his name. He was a former lieutenant of records and parking for the city of Easton when they decriminalized their parking in 2013, I believe. And his experience illuminated inefficiencies in the system, as it were. And, and he, based on his experience in his position, recommended some of the changes that we're proposing here.
Yeah, and, and the end result of the changes to those communities were less tickets and more revenue collected. That's kind of really what we're looking for here. We're not looking to issue tickets. We're not looking to immobilize anybody. We're looking to put a system in place that people understand what to expect and just comply.
So he was someone that worked for that consultant that you had hired?
That is, that, that, that was the consultant.
He was the consultant?
Yes.
And then you said Easton, but what other municipalities have had success with this type of change?
You remember, Ben, Redding for sure.
We know the example of Omaha, Nebraska as well. That, that was a prominent one he brought up.
So as for PA, just Easton, possibly Redding? So as for PA, Easton, possibly Redding?
Easton and Redding, yeah. We, we, and we could get a, a, a full list from him as to what cities in Pennsylvania are actually doing this, but, but those are the two that come to mind.
And then it says here that we have a burden on our local magistrates. You said you spoke with one of the magistrates. Do you know what magistrate that was?
I, I haven't met with them and, met with her in a, in a, it's been a while.
I'm guessing that would be fair because it's downtown.
And then when it comes to appeals, it would go to county judges with, with common pleas?
That's how it is now.
That's how it is now, yeah. That, this, right, right. If this changes, it would go to a hearing officer. And there'd be, you know, we have to work out the details, of course, but they would first come to ABM and AB, there would be a list of things that you're allowed to appeal. And then those things, if you appeal, it would go to the hearing officer and that hearing officer would be objective and hear, and hear, and hear the cases. And, and the experience that our consultant shared with us was that those cases will be a lot of cases at first because people are still getting a lot of tickets. And then those cases will drop dramatically. So he doesn't believe that this is a, a really significant workload ultimately for the hearing officer because the number of tickets that will be on appeal, there's only a few things that you can appeal. There'll be a list of those and they'll be publicized. And that, that number will be small eventually. At first, there'll be a lot because people will get, need to get used to the system. But he does not think, and his experience is, that it's, it's not going to be a burdensome role. There won't be many of these appeals.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll take a two-minute break and come back for the 6:30 meeting.